Okay, I have it as seven oh two, so I will call this. November fourteenth twenty twenty four Planning Board Meeting to Order. Uh first order of business take a roll call vote, so in order if I see Matt Lowry.
Yeah.
Kevin York.
Yes.
Theo Noel.
Here.
And myself Jim Hogan, so we have a quorum for of the five members of the board. First order of business is approval of the meeting minutes from October twenty ninth twenty twenty four. Do any mi- members of the board have any questions or concerns related to the the meeting minutes presented? In that case, uh is any member of the board wish to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Motion by Mister Lowry, do I hear a second?
A second.
Second by Kevin, so we'll call vote Theo Noel.
Yes.
Kevin York.
Yes.
Matt Lowry.
Yes.
And myself, uh I will abstain as I was not at that meeting, so motion passes three to zero. So, the next order of business is the public hearing, which is scheduled for seven oh five related to the proposed. MBTA forty A multifamily zoning overlay district. Uh it's given is not seven oh five right now, uh I'd like to skip to items not anticipated in order to. To to allow for the public hearing to occur in conformance of when we'd have the uh. Hearing posted, so do any members of the board have any items not anticipated by the chair that they would like to to uh say right now?
Yeah, I'll I'll just um shout out that um. I've uh I've got an uh sort of what I hope is a final draft of the the subdivision uh rules and regs um with. Uh with Sam and and Bill Reno and uh Bill Spalding, so um we should be able post town meeting to get together. Um and put some uh. Uh some final edits there and be able to distribute that back to the the planning board. Just a little housekeeping.
And Theo, you said, when do you think that that would be ready for review by the board?
I. Did didn't we say um? Well, A I I can get back to you on that, I thought we selected a date.
We'd select the twenty six, I just wanted to make sure that we're still on on track for that. Which is our next meeting.
Oh, um. I think I think we can make it, um yeah.
Okay, just let me know, uh we can take that offline, if if you you think we have, you're gonna be be ready, uh then we can. We can put that on the agenda, if not, then we can push it into December.
Yeah, well. I'll let you know.
Okay, any other members of the board have items not anticipated before we get to seven oh five? Okay, not hearing anything, then I'll just give another minute and then we can get started and open the public hearing.
And Mister Hogan, if I can just ask a quick question, do you want me to do the full presentation again?
Yes.
Okay.
So, I have it as seven oh five, so I'll open the. Uh MBTA forty A multifamily zoning overlay district public hearing, uh that's scheduled for this, the. Uh November fourteenth twenty twenty four uh Planning Board Meeting, just to set the table a little bit. For for those who are not familiar with the process, so this overlay district has been. Uh referred by Town Council to the Planning Board for the inclusion in the warrant on this Saturday, November sixteenth. At this meeting, we will be voting as a planning board, uh whether or not to recommend favorable action or not recommend favorable action at town meeting. However, though that is non-binding and the. The Town Council or the Town Meeting rather can vote. In opposition to whatever we may or may not recommend, it's very, it's happened multiple times in the past where. It a warrants that we have either recommended for favorable action have been shot down at town meeting or vice versa, so. Nothing's being decided tonight, just whether or not the Planning Board at the town meeting will say whether we recommend favorable action or not. With that being said, um S- Sam, uh I'm gonna turn it over to you so you can present the presentation. After that, then uh allow any members of the Planning Board to ask questions, open up for public comment. And then we'll uh I ant- I anticipate that we will take a vote based on historical precedence. So with that, Sam, you wanna open up the presentation and run through it, I know you gave it last the last at the last meeting, but I think it's. Worth having the presentation fresh in everyone's mind.
Sure, not a problem. All right. So, uh this is to review the MBTA Communities Overlay District that is proposed. Um it came out of the uh Town Council's Subcommittee. Um just to give some background if anybody hasn't been aware of that, um and I'll go into that in a little more detail. So if you haven't been around or haven't heard about this, what is MBTA Communities, um it's a twenty twenty one passed state law. That uh can be found in the Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter forty A, Section three A. Um it impacts any community that's serviced by MBTA. From commuter rail to buses, um as well as the the subway, which uh is. Part of the entire um area that you see, the service area that you see here in the map. Uh for Wakefield, we were required to create a minimum district under MBTA Communities, um that is thirty six acres. Uh has the capacity of one thousand six hundred ninety six units at fifteen units per acre. And seventy five percent of that district um needs to be within half a mile of. Our commuter rail stations, since we are a commuter rail community. And we can have up to twenty five percent of that requirement off-site. So, just to give a a brief background, uh in spring twenty twenty four, after. The Planning Board had worked with uh the community and uh um had some public meetings as well and public engagement. They have a proposal that came through, they are um two, there were two different districts. Um the a primary one and then a an alternate plan that the Planning Board sponsored and put forward, um then there was also. A citizens petition that was reviewed, the townspeople ended up voting all. Proposals down at Springtown Meeting, so in summer of twenty twenty four, the Town Council. Uh formed the forty A Subcommittee, uh who collaborated with the public and about a hundred days, they had public meetings. They put out a survey which had eight hundred fifty two responses, um held two public forums and have, we have also held coffee hours to help people. Um get up to date and kind of. Work to answer any questions the public has had, um as well as take some public input. Um the survey did offer a uh great amount of guidance for the Subcommittee. As well as showing that the town still had interest in trying to put something forward, there was a um just over fifty percent, I have to look at the exact numbers again. Um so about fifty two percent, I think it was, it was in support of having a district, so. Still very close, um and of course without knowing uh what the district would look like, um people were kind of voting blindly and that. Uh but they they were looking for the potential of compliance or at least open to it, so the Town Council. Um has worked hard to put together a new district and new bylaw, um based off of the guidance they gained from again the survey. As well as all of these public engagement events um that have been held, so their proposed um district is the MBTA Communities Overlay District. It is comprised of four character areas, um the industrial loft character area, which is located on Foundry. The high-rise residential character area, which is located on Audubon. The neighborhood commercial character area. Which is located on, there's two sections of it, there's one on Albion Street between North Avenue and Main Street. And then there's one on Greenwood, which is um effectively on on Main Street, um just around that area. Where it intersects with Greenwood and Oak. And then there's also the North Ave, um mixed use character area, which is on the. East side of North Ave from the lake down to the middle school. And then also the the train station right there around the Wakefield commuter rail stop. Um so if you haven't heard from um pri- our prior presentations, um I when you don't know what a character area is, it's okay, it's. Kind of a an easy thing to explain and and really that we're looking to maintain development. Standards that are in that area, so a commercial area would stay commercial instead of letting it creep into residential and the residential areas would stay residential, um. And trying to be able to maintain the existing character of the area, so the feel, so you have these pedestrian areas, um. That are commer- or these commercial areas that are pedestrian in nature, they're very friendly to the pedestrian engagement with the first floor commercial space. And really allows you to be able to access services that you would need on a day-to-day basis within walking distance um of some of these areas. Uh especially like Foundry Street, it's it's accessible to the train as well as downtown Wakefield um by foot, so. In an effort to maintain these existing character areas, which was one of the things that, one of the big concerns that was brought up um through the public engagement that the Town Council had. The Town Council Subcommittee was that they really wanted to keep the multifamily closer to the commercial areas and not have it impact the residential areas. As the previous iterations of the MBTA Community Overlay did, um they were very heavily impacting the existing single-family and two-family residential areas. Um around Wakefield Station, so in looking at these different character areas, I'm gonna kind of go through them so you can get a very basic overview. Um and if you have questions, I can um go into more detail, there's a lot of information on the screen, so I'm gonna try to go quickly. Uh so one of the first areas is the industrial loft character area. It's primarily based off of Foundry Street, so it's where Grayson Lofts is or the Foundry. Um and then the Renly Building, which is under construction currently between Foundry and the train. Um and then it includes some other multifamily developments, the entire area that's in. Um this particular character area is mostly developed and has a heavy. Multifamily use already existing, um under MBTA Communities, the. Structures that could be built by right would not exceed five stories. Or um fifty seven feet in height, um and the way that MBTA Communities is set up is that that's what's done by right, you can't have anything additional. Um setbacks would be relatively consistent with the area, maybe ten-foot front and side setbacks and then a rear setback um of fifteen feet. Uh and adding an additional ten feet, meaning it goes up to twenty five if there's uh residential abutting. The lot coverage would be a maximum sixty percent, and then a footprint per building would max out at fifteen thousand square feet. Um and it would require one point five parking spaces per unit, which is pretty consistent um with other residential developments that are in Wakefield. It also allows the option of either residential or mixed use, so you could have five stories of residential. Or you could have that first floor be a commercial space and then the subsequent floors on top of it be residential. And here's the existing density, the colored parcels are ones that already have a residential use, um this is a map from a. Program online called Residency, so you can see the density of the area, the darker, the more units. That particular lot has, the lighter is, the less units it has. And again, these are two examples of what has been built there, um you can see Foundry Lofts and then also Grayson Lofts. Now Grayson Lofts is six stories, so that is not something that would be able to be built by right under MBTA Communities Overlay. Um however, it is something that is existing and it would through a special permit process. The next area, character area is the high-rise residential character area, it's located on Audubon, which is just north of ninety five. Um kind of close to the Lynn Field um market area, if you're aware of that or Pleasure Island, if you've been here for a while, I know the history. Um the structure that's currently there is a hundred and seventy six units, they're all apartments, um then it has a very large parking lot, which you can see from. This graphic, it's a hundred and seventy six units, under MBTA Communities, it could go up to four hundred and eighteen, but again, they. Still do need to meet all of the requirements for parking and setbacks and and whatnot on site. Um the structure is currently twelve stories, it would not be able to exceed ten stories under MBTA Communities. Uh front setback is twenty feet, side setback and rear setbacks are also thirty feet, um. And the rear setback increases again if it's a budding residential, which currently it's all commercial, but if something were to change, um that that could potentially change. The lot coverage maximum will be thirty percent in this particular area because it does have some um. Zone A, which is uh has to do with drinking water, um and it has a higher setback because of that. Um as also the wetlands, which you can see in this graphic, um here, the shaded area, the hatched area is where. The development could not happen, and the red area that um you can see on the map, that's the only spot where development could happen, so. Conservation Commission has actually reviewed this, they, we have a letter of support from them. It pulls, i- if for some reason it were to be developed, um it would pull the development away from wetlands and give them actually a larger buffer than what they have currently. Or what they could even ask for under a new project, um so they are currently in support of this iteration. And again, it would require five point, one point five spaces per unit, um like other residential developments in Wakefield. And that's what it looks like currently. So, the next one is the North Avenue Mixed Use Character Area, um this extends the entire east side of. North Ave from Church Street, uh from the lake all the way down to the middle school and then. Uh covers also both sides of the street where the train station is, um historic train station, used to be for for Wakefield. Um so this particular area requires mixed use on the first floor and then offers two stories of residential on um above that. So it would maintain the existing character of the area, which is primarily that commercial first floor space, um providing. Uh different retail or restaurant services to the public, um and allow for that street engagement. While providing the potential for residential above that, um around transit. And the character setback, character area setbacks for North Ave as well as the um. Neighborhood commercial character areas are very similar, so you have zero percent, uh there's zero parking requirement for the first floor. You have one point five spaces per residential unit, the building footprint maximum is ten thousand square feet, lot coverage is fifty percent. Um and then the setbacks are consistent with what the existing developments are, so it's a front and side setback of zero. And from this map, you can see that there are a handful of residential developments already in this area, but it is a an area that has potential for more development. Um with the residential mixed use component, it's it's primarily just commercial right now. Um and this would be all maintaining what you would have found historically, so I know that this graphic is of. Main Street, but I wanted to give you a visual of what the area looked like historically, so it's as lined up as I could make it. Um but you would see either offices or residential uses in those subsequent upper floors, um actually, there was a. I think a a factory for a little while on the building on your right, up on that Mansard Roof. On the fourth floor, which doesn't exist there anymore, um but these are very traditional downtown developments. Um where you have a two or three-story building and you have the commercial first floor with the storefront space and the the glass that engages the public. And then the residential um components on top. So the, again, the other character area um that has similar development standards to North Ave would be the neighborhood commercial character area. Um this particular uh first area is Albion Street, it has currently seventy units, um as it includes a development on. The corner of Richardson and Foster Street, which is a condo building. A five-story condo building, um so this particular area primarily just has commercial uses, um there's a handful of residential, but it is another one that. Could be residential or mixed use, um if it's a residential structure, it's maxed out at two stories. If it is a mixed-use structure, you have that first floor of commercial space and then two stories on top of that. Um and again, have zero parking requirement for commercial, consistent with uh downtown Wakefield area. Uh already, and then one point five spaces per um residential unit. These are the existing residential developments in that area, again, the darker the color, the higher the density, so more units. Um if it's darker, and then the units that are the um parcels that are just gray and still outlined by the Green District. Are the ones that are currently just commercial, um. Uh then the next character area, uh still neighborhood commercial, but the next area would be Greenwood. And this is kind of that Greenwood Town Center area, if you've been down there, um. It's around the train station, uh the commuter rail station that is down there, and it would have the same character area. Uh requirements um or parameters as Albion and North Ave. Um and would allow for the either two-story residential. Or the three-story with the first floor as commercial space and then the second story and the third story would be residential uses. There is an example of a mixed-use structure that already exists there, if you kind of wanna get an idea for what it might look like. Um at the corner of the northwest corner of Greenwood and Main Street, um it's a gray building. With first floor commercial and then um I believe ten units on top. And so if you look at that on here, you can actually see that building is very close to the dot where Greenwood is, it's got the the letter G over it. Um and then these other developments are residential developments, um that are multifamily or multi-unit developments. Here's an example of what the. Mixed use could look like, um on the left, you have a mixed-use building on Water Street that's proposed. Um for first floor is commercial space and then the second and third floor are residential. Um on the right-hand side, you'll see Albion Street. And this area historically has had a mix of uses, um between the commercial spaces and some residential. Um or a mixed-use structure, the corner of um. I think it's Foster and Albion is where um the Wakefield item is, and you can see here, if you've walked past it, the storefront does not look like this. Right now, it's actually completely bricked over, um so one thing that MBTA Communities would encourage would be that. Engagement with the pedestrians, you would have the the storefront that would be glass, you wouldn't have small windows or you wouldn't have the bricked-up spaces. Um or the spanses that ju- just don't serve the pedestrian experience in that area. So, overall, the district um is just one point five percent higher than what the requirement is, so it includes. One thousand seven hundred and twenty-two units at maximum density, again, most of these areas are already, or most of the parcels are already developed. They already have multifamily structures or a new development on them, um so the potential of what could be built. Um it's it's very hard to say, but under MBTA Communities and the overlay, they want a number, and so. The maximum under the parameters that we have set uh for the overlay is one thousand seven hundred and twenty-two units. Currently, there are seven, eight hundred and seventy-six units, which does not include um projects that are currently under construction, so there would be a sixty-five. Unit increase um in that number, so just over nine hundred units. And then um the acreage is fifty-four point four. So let's see here, the uh affordable housing and it's come up in in a couple of our uh meetings with the public as whether or not this this. Development um for the MBTA Communities Overlay would be affordable housing, or if it would be um. Kind of government-run housing or immigrant shelters or anything like that, um the goal of MBTA Communities is to provide year-round market housing. Market-rate housing, so it provides market-rate housing. Sorry, market-rate housing versus affordable housing, there is an affordability component of um ten percent. So ten percent of the overall units for any building over eight units would be required to meet. Um what's known as eighty percent AMI, which is the area median income, right now it's around ninety thousand dollars. Um is the eighty eighty percent threshold, um so somebody that makes ninety thousand dollars a year or less. Um would be. Eligible for these affordable units and they would could potentially go into a lottery system, um which if you have questions about, I can. I'm happy to answer those later, but that's the affordability component that's allowed under MBTA Communities, um we do have. Another affordability component um initiative that has been enacted in Wakefield since twenty fifteen. Which has increased our affordable housing number count, which is called the S H I or the subsidized housing inventory with the state. Uh many people are aware of the impact that has on forty Bs in the area. Through the inclusionary zoning efforts, um since twenty fifteen, we have added one thousand three hundred and twenty housing units. To Wakefield and four hundred and nineteen of those have been affordable units. So we're very, very close to that ten percent, if you look um the most current number from October. Uh when the last unit was added was, we're at nine point one three percent, which we need to get to ten percent, so we're very close to all of that, we've made a lot of strides in that. Um if you wanna know more about affordable housing, feel free to reach out. I'm happy to answer questions, there's also the Housing Production Plan that's underway, um that gets into more detail about affordability, which is not the primary goal. Of MBTA Communities. And also, if you haven't heard, the uh the preference for um year-round housing is one of the big things that MBTA Communities is looking at. Um trying to drive in the area versus adding to short-term rentals or anything like that, so we are allowed to prohibit. Short-term rental uh in as a use in the MBTA zoning overlay, so it is explicitly prohibited. So they have to be year-round units, meaning that anybody can live there year-round, it isn't popping between people, um and. Excuse me, it's currently, short-term rentals are not currently regulated under our zoning, um so we wanted to make sure that those were. Explicitly prohibited uh within the. Um overlay areas. So we can get into to non-compliance, um we know that it will risk current and future grant funding. Um at this point, we have hit about three point seven million dollars in the last five years, um that number is a moving target. Uh because there are grants that are continuously added to the list, uh but as of right now, that's the number that we're looking at would potentially be impacted. We could also be facing a lawsuit, the AG will um likely sue the town if we don't comply. Um and so we would be facing a potential cost of legal action as well as. Being forced, the the potential of being forced to comply, um and having a a district drawn for us, so this allows us to have more. Uh engagement and focus on what we would want to see if we have to. Uh comply with what is uh outlined in the MBTA Communities Law, so here's a big long list, um I'm not gonna read through all of them. I'm happy to, this will be posted online, so you can read through them later, um one of the grants that has. The grant categories that has been recently acti- uh added to the list is the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, so these are education grants. Um and there are some special education grants that have been recently also added on to that, some supplemental grants for the Metco program, so. It is regularly being updated and now impacting um educational grants, so this is just the language from the. Actual website, just so you can see it, um you're more than welcome to look them up, uh and they are, again, there's more and more being added. One, this is the language from One Stop, so this is all, this is a list of all the different grants that are under the One Stop Program. Um and the three different offices uh that they fall under. They all require compliance to be eligible, um if a grant doesn't explicitly require compliance, some of them are. Having an impact of uh lowering the points, so if you have to ha- you get so many points for each grant application and. You wanna rank higher, so you wanna get more points, um and we can be deducted points. And that might put us below the threshold of whether or not we're advancing into the next round of being considered for a grant, unfortunately. Um MBTA, uh the state has also added the MBTA Communities Catalyst Fund. Which is up to five million dollars um per year, available with two hundred and fifty, on average, they're estimating two hundred fifty thousand to one million dollar awards. Um these are for properties within the MBTA Communities District, um so it would be properties within the overlay. And it is for infrastructure, housing development, or acqui- acquisition of properties uh with the intent to develop housing units. So there is an incentive that the state is offering for projects, um. That could happen within the overlay, but again, we have to have a past overlay in order to be eligible for that grant money. Um so over the last five years, these are some of the different big grants, we have um North Avenue Water Main uh Improvement. There's the Housing Production Plan, which we're working on right now, there's uh sidewalk projects, the tip funds were just added, the Transportation Improvement Projects. And that is um two to three million dollars per project uh that could be impacted. We have Albion Street Complete Streets Program, some shared street programs as well, um and and they all. They all add up, so if you're looking for additional information, um the uh. The town, as well as the subcommittee with the Subcommittee, um has put together an information packet, it's on the website, there's a ton of on-demand videos you can watch. Um from previous meetings. And then we also mailed postcards out to every property owner within the boundaries of the overlay. So that they would be aware that this could potentially be impacting their property, um and it's not going to change, it's not a mandate, it's not going to mean something. Your property is going to have a different use, it just states um that this is an option if somebody is redeveloping a property or developing a property. Um I don't think there's anything that's vacant, but if they were developing for the first time, they would have the capacity to either choose to utilize underlying zoning in a special apartment process. Um or a potential special apartment process, or they can do something by right under MBTA Communities Overlay. So, does anybody have any questions for me?
So thanks, Sam, thank you uh for that presentation, uh before we open up to questions, I'd like to. Uh have an opportunity if any of the other members of the Subcommittee that developed the plan. Uh would like to speak or have any comments and then we can move into questions. Um if any of the members would like to to throw any comments, feel free to raise your hand and we can. Call on you. Okay, uh not seeing any raised hands, uh any members of the, oh, I see uh Counselor McLean, you raised your hand. Uh I can, you s- sounds relatively faint.
Okay, I'll uh try to speak up, um. The um only thing I would correct that Sam said is I believe the percentage of um. From the eight hundred fifty-two was not fifty-two percent in favor of some kind of compromise, but it was fifty-seven to forty-three. That's my memory.
Thank you.
Um beyond that, uh no comments at this time, thank you very much.
Thank you. So in that case, any members of the planning board have any questions or comments they'd like to pose to the proponent? Mr. Lowry.
All right, thank you. Thank you for that presentation. I do have a couple of questions on the bylaw text. Specifically, first one is for the building footprint in the zoning chart. That is 15,000 square foot, or the square footage there is per building or per lot?
It's per building.
Okay. Should it specify per building? Because every, everything else in the chart is per lot. So that's, that was my question. Does this need to be revised to, to say per building?
And Mr. Lowry, you're specifically talking about the table that's on the screen right now that's being shared, this building footprint number right here?
Let me move my windows around to see that. Um, yes.
I think on previous iterations, there was more text spelling that out, and that is why that particular part was not explicitly written out.
All right, so is this maybe a floor change that needs to be done in order to make sure this is, says per building?
Sorry, hold on, I want to look at one of the previous ones. And I would have to defer to Steve on if that's how that would be, on how that would be handled.
I actually thought it was, was pretty clear, but Tom Mullen, who was on, what do you think, Tom?
It only refers to the footprint of a building, building footprint. It doesn't say maximum building area per lot.
There is a maximum lot coverage, and then there is the building footprint, and then there is a separate item under number two, Building Dimensional Standards. It's the fourth item down, building separation from multiple buildings on lot.
Yeah.
So we think that it means that the way that is written, it's saying that it's the maximum building footprint per lot?
Well, the way I read that chart is everything else in there is per lot. And then you've got maximum foot, the building footprint maximum. So I, to me, unless it specifies per building, that would be maximum per lot. Unless, unless I'm incorrect, and that's, that's just the question I have.
Uh, while, while Steve and Tom are looking at that, do you have other questions, Mr. Lowry, you'd like to pose to?
Well, I do, if may answer, my, my second question is, how is the unit count for the Audubon Road developed? Because again, if it's 20,000 square foot maximum building footprint, I don't see how you can get a, a count that that's high, because I assume 20,000 square foot is based on the existing building that is there, which is about, it looks like about 20,000 square feet. And also, per the assessors card, that appears to be what it is. Uh, but then you're taking off two stories of that. You're limiting it to 10 stories instead of 12. So in order to double, more than double the unit count on there, you would have to have at least two buildings of 20,000 square feet, if, if not more, because it just doesn't work. The math just doesn't work. So, you know, the other, so my other question is, how is the unit count for Audubon Road determined?
Well, the consultant helped us through getting that density and going through the whole formula for compliance and running through what they call the compliance model. And that utilized the bylaw as written and the table as written, with the intent, all conversations were building footprint per building, not coverage on lot, where lot coverage is spelled out specifically and explicitly separately, as well as the building separation from multiple buildings on lot.
All right.
Yeah, I, I, if I can jump in, Jim, I've been thinking about this. Thank you, Matt.
Yes, please.
I, I look at this as building footprint per building. Although we still certainly have to meet lot coverage ratios, as you know. And there is, and what further thinks me it's poor, it's, what further makes me think it's per building, because we also have a little bit down, building separation from multiple buildings on lot. That's 20 feet, I think. So that leads me to believe it's per building, but that's my, um, my feeling on it. I always thought it was per building when we talked about it.
Well, would a clarification then be in order to make sure it's maximum, it just put building footprint maximum per building? To, so there is, is further confusion?
Uh, Tom, I don't, I don't see a problem with it myself. Tom Mullen, do you?
Tom, if you're speaking, you're on mute.
Sorry. I wouldn't see any problem with being explicit about it, as Steve suggests, but I'm just wondering, all of the building dimensional standards under two relate to buildings, don't they, as opposed to lots?
Correct.
I mean, it says building dimensional standards, and then everything there, ground floor, residential, fenestration, ground story, active use, continuous facade, everything there is per building, not per lot. Which suggests it's, it's no great harm if you don't change it.
Okay, that, that's fine. That was, that was just my, my question on that, so. All right, so again, when the unit count for Audubon Road was, you know, was developed, was the, the text, was this text already in the works?
Yes.
All right, so they use this text in order to make sure that physically those 418 units could be built?
Correct.
Okay. All right. And my other question is, I understand that Audubon Road is, all of those units up there are deemed affordable units, correct? So they, they go towards our maximum?
Correct. Yeah.
Uh, is there anything in place to protect them if for some reason that building needs to be redeveloped, that those units are somehow locked in? Or, or what's the town's protection on those, or is there any?
So I want to check and see, one thing really quick, there is a time period on the contract for those units. I don't know what happens if somebody tries to cancel or tries to get out of a contract. I don't know what the, the process of that would be.
When you say contract, you mean that there's a covenant that lapses in terms of the requirement to maintain them as affordable?
There's an agreement, and that expires in 2040, per my notes. I would want to double-check that with HUD and the state, but that's the, the year I have in my notes.
Was, is this like a HUD 236?
I would defer to Steve.
It is a HUD building. I don't know if it's a 236. But there is a contract that it, it remains that until, I'm trying to pull up the form right now.
Steve, mine says 2040, my notes.
2040.
No. Yeah, there, there would certainly be a process of conversion, renewal, re-engagement, something to, to recapitalize or change ownership and extend affordability. So, so, okay, so there is something that if for some reason the building owner there, there was a structural issue, the building needed to be pulled down, they wouldn't be able to just rebuild with 20, with 10%, they could, they would be obligated to have the full existing unit count as of form.
I, I would say, short of doing, look, looking at the agreement, but that, that would, that would be the premise. Like, you know, HUD's going to have a deed restriction or something in, to that effect.
Okay. All right, thanks. Thanks, Theo. The other question I have is, so for the Albion and Greenwood section zones, there's an option to have commercial on the first floor or not. Are you concerned at all with if people choose to not have commercial on the first floor and put in a two-family of the loss of parking spaces with having to potentially add two driveways?
Um, well, the utilization of commercial is incentivized through a zero-parking requirement for mixed use in both Albion and Greenwood areas, as well as North Ave. So that's one part of that question. The, the best we can do is incentivize it in that way. And then for curb cuts, I don't regulate that. I would have to defer to the other departments who review that. There's been discussion even with ADUs on how far apart curb cuts need to be, and this is the reality of that impact, because we're opening up the conversation too for ADUs, which don't want to have that conversation yet here. But there is, there is a question on spacing of curb cuts, but I unfortunately don't have a clear answer for you and what that impact would be. There is potential for a lot of those, they're technically supposed to be able to meet that onsite, and whether or not having tandem parking on either side is appropriate, because you have one and a half spaces per unit if you have two units, which, again, this is hypothetical, because generally speaking, two units don't really pencil for a lot of these projects. But should somebody do something like that, it would be three, three spaces, and whether or not tandem is permitted, and all of that comes into play under a, a parking review component, and as well as traffic and safety. Those reviews still have to happen by right. This is not a special apartment process, so they can't just kind of get out or get around any of those other review components or other requirements through other departments or sections of code or anything like that. So that would come under review and have a, um, have that opportunity for comment as part of that, because all of the projects under MBTA Communities Overlay would still have a site plan review. They don't have a discretionary hearing, but they do still have an opportunity for that type of feedback and comment.
All right. Again, I guess my question was more to the, the subcommittee that put this together, because there is a real possibility that some of these marginal buildings on Albion Street, and more so on Albion Street than in Greenwood, I believe, although there's, by looking at, there's a few that could be developed. If you had to redevelop it as just a two-family, the, the cost of it is a lot cheaper than adding in commercial space, but the unintended consequences of that is you, you lose parking spaces. You lose street parking by having to put driveways in. Has, has been looked at, how many potentially of parking spaces you could lose?
I, to, through the chair, I had reached out to the other departments for comments back on this and have not received any comments thus far, aside from a conservation commission.
All right. Truthfully, I, I think a better alternative for this would have been to have commercial on the first floor with residential up above and have no parking requirements. Therefore, people purchasing these would know that there is no parking. If you're going to purchase one of these units.
Mr. Lowry, Mr. Counselor McLean, who's on the subcommittee, has raised his hand. Can we allow him the opportunity to respond to that specific comment?
Sure.
Mr. McLean?
Thank you, Mr. Hogan. I guess, Matt, the way I would address this is without, you know, when you look at Albion Street and Greenwood, and I'm, and I'm not going to get into particular parking spaces, but say, for example, a building like the item ultimately sold, would it be more likely that somebody is going to do two-story residential? And I, I understand your, your idea that commercial may be a little more costly, but if they can get three floors and they can do first-floor commercial and second and third residential, aren't they more likely to do that? And maintain the, even though it's not required, as it is on North Ave, I think in many of the properties, you know, that are contained in the 12 acres in Greenwood, which I would suggest is a modest amount, and in the Albion Street corridor as well, that it's very likely to me that we would maintain a lot of the commercial and, you know, with residential on top. Now, if that means that they have to have parking for the residential, then, you know, they, they're, they're, they're going to have to meet those guidelines. I, I don't, this isn't maybe a perfect plan, but we couldn't require first floor, my understanding, Samantha, is we couldn't require first-floor commercial in all three of those areas. So, you know, we did the best that we could. I don't see that Albion and Greenwood would be terribly affected by this, but we may, we may just have a different opinion on that.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, if I may, to go off of Mike's point, there's, there's two really big things that were, were driving this. One component of it is the MBTA Communities Regulations from the state requires 50% of the district to be contiguous, meaning around one of the, one of the train stations. So 50% of those 1,696 units and 36 acres needs to be entirely connected around the area. Additionally, through the survey and public engagement, there was a big push to include Albion Street and to include these commercial areas as potential for redevelopment, and to keep it out of the residential area. The utilization of mixed use was originally offered as an either-or. You can do residential or you can do mixed use. You can't mandate one or the other. As part of the original 2021 law, through iterations and back and forth, they ended up adding the mandatory mixed-use district. However, when there is a mandatory mixed-use district, one, we need to get it approved by the state before we actually include it in the overlay, before we can even utilize it. So we did that with North Ave, but two, you can't actually use the acreage. So if we did a mandatory mixed-use area on Albion, we would have to add additional parcels to the district in order to meet those minimum acres of developable land. And that particular area is a little bit limited, because Crystal Lake is utilized as a water, it's utilized as a water supply. So there's a watershed and 200 Zone A buffer requirement, if you want to get into all the technical terms. There is a requirement. There is a, a requirement, so there is a good chunk of foundry that cannot be utilized at all. Um, kind of south of where the district stops, which is why you have that kind of curved angle, um, and why the, the parcel zigzag a little bit. Um, because there is a requirement or a, um, a limitation, um, on some of that land. So those are really driving factors for the utilization of, um, residential and commercial and trying to incorporate both of them. And the biggest incentive we could offer, um, that the Subcommittee and the public felt comfortable with, because there's still a concern for parking, is to offer the zero for commercial space consistent with the rest of downtown. Um, so no matter what the use is, there's no special permit, there's no variance, there's no additional process, it's just zero. And the, um, developer can go in with a kind of more mid to, to smaller scale project. Um, and while those sometimes are harder to finance, it is still in a, a large opportunity for them to be able to have that space.
Mr. Mayo, I see your hands raised.
I, I just want to add in on the, um, when we did look at one of the anomalies on, um, when you're, you're looking at the state numbers is that, uh, the, um, on the Albion Street character area, there are seventy existing residential units. And if, uh, the three A buildout is only fifty, that's not fifty more, that's fifty total. So that's an anomaly there that I think also helped make us feel, um, uh, uh, o- okay with that, you know, based on everything that Sam and Mike said as well. Thank you.
All right, um, I, unfortunately, I, I still see some, some issues where some of these properties will be developed without commercial, um, and just residential, and we have the potential of losing parking spaces down there. And I, and I know that's a large issue for, for the townsfolk because we are very limited on parking. So, uh, that's something that can see could happen. Let's, you check my notes. I think for now, um, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Noel, I s- I know that you had your hand raised earlier. Did you have any questions you'd like to pose to the, to the present, the applicant?
Yes, um, and, uh, first of all, um, uh, I think a, a big shout out of thanks to the Town Council and the Subcommittee for doing all the work on this. And, and again, a, a shout out to all the town staff. Um, um, that, uh, this is, you know, we've, we've been talking about this for a year, um, plus, and it's a big lift, and, um, I think, I think we all really do appreciate, um, the, the work. Um, I just piggybacking on that. Um, we can't, um, for the, the Albion corridor, um, the, you can't, you can't go to zero parking spaces per resident, right? I mean, MBTA, you've got to have one point five. Right, okay, so, all right, so that's a limitation. Um, um, uh, given, given the timing, would we be able, uh, in a future town meeting to amend the Albion dis- Albion District? Um, I mean, I, I, I've just answered my own question, thinking of, thinking out loud about it. The, uh, um, we spent a lot of time talking about, uh, the net new housing units and, um, and how that seems a little, uh, like really potentially too dense or, uh, really compounding a lot of housing development. And I was just hoping to hear from the, the Subcommittee members really about, uh, sort of the, the broader vision for why selecting the character areas. And I'm asking this really because, um, I think it's a, a positive discussion to have just in terms, because I think that's really what zoning is all about, is really about planning and visioning for the future. And, um, uh, I think it's, uh, because we're, you know, theory, you know, we're only talking about uh, density on paper, um, at, at the moment. Um, so if there's anything, um, that the Subcommittee, uh, could speak to just in terms of the, um, the character areas and taking advantage of them in the MBTA, uh, law and, um, and how that really supports sort of Wakefield's historic patterns would be, would be useful to hear.
Anyone from the Subcommittee want to, uh, respond to that question from, uh, Mr. McLean, Councilor McLean, sorry?
Thank you, uh, Chair Hogan. How, um, I'm not sure I can hit all of Theo's points adequately, but I think if we're talking about what our thought process was, certainly for Albion, um, Greenwood, uh, North Ave, we wanted to do the best we could to increase, you know, close to the train station density without seriously impacting the character of those neighborhoods. I think it's telling, if you look at it, that some of these, um, mod or MBTA Communities' proposals we're making are actually, um, smaller. For example, you know, on Foundry, you wouldn't have the six-story building, it wouldn't be allowed. Uh, if you go up and down North Ave, if you're standing at the train station, you look to the right and, you know, you see the, what, what I call the, the tono building, the, uh, the building with, uh, first, first floor restaurant and, uh, health, uh, activities. That's a little bit higher than what we would allow. So when you look at this two slash three-story, um, area that we've proposed, I think it's modest and in-character, and it will probably increase some density. Um, I don't think as much as, you know, the gross numbers show, but whatever that amount is, I think we tried to maintain the character. Um, Foundry Street already has its own character, so like I say, we, we capped that at five stories. Um, but we did use that because it is very close as well into the train station. Um, I, I think, you know, you know, my own personal, I, uh, opinion on this was to try to do a little bit less in the residential areas and, um, and reduce the, uh, acreage. And while we didn't get down to thirty-six acres, I think we're at fifty-four point, uh, four acres, uh, as opposed to, you know, a hundred twelve or a hundred forty-two. Um, whether you agree or disagree with that, that was our goal, and I think we've done our best, you know, to achieve it.
Yeah, no, and I, I, I do appreciate that, and I did, I do appreciate you speaking to it. And, um, that's, I, I, I think it's, uh, I think very valuable to be looking at the map of Wakefield and seeing, uh, sort of this, the, you know, the color of these zones, um, relative to the, the rest of the town. Um, because I, and I, I, it does seem like you, you've hit, you've achieved that goal by not intruding on, um, like you say, more of the residential areas, sort of, you know, in between North Ave and Main Street, um, or, or whatnot.
I, I think one other thing, Theo, that I would say is that, um, as was said in the last cycle, you know, when nothing was proposed at that point in time for Greenwood, for example, you know, well, we may wish to do other things, right?
Yeah.
And we, you know, we, I believe we already have the special permit district that has so taken off around Wakefield Station. Uh, also exists in Greenwood, it just hasn't really, you know, been utilized to the full extent. So I guess what I'd say is we're picking out certain areas to try to achieve a compromise, which I said at our meeting is a mutually disagreeable solution. Uh, but that doesn't preclude the town through the HPP, uh, through, you know, housing choice, through so many other avenues, uh, from considering other options in addition to this in the future.
Right, um, I, I, I appreciate you saying that as well, so, um, the, um, I, I, I think that's, that's, I, you know, I, I was, uh, that's, those are my questions, just really getting to, I think, right, the compromise nature and the, and the, the vision. And, um, and I, I think that's really a, a helpful articulation, um, because I, I think sometimes the, the, the unit discussion tends to override and, uh, sort of, uh, uh, take us off point, so, thank you very much.
Mr. York?
I, I just have one question before we start to get to, to public comment and feedback. Sammy, you mentioned the last meeting, this had been submitted to the state. Have you heard any feedback from the state on this plan since then?
I, oh, what type of feed, I mean, we've had a, the ability to at least have some feedback from the Attorney General or, uh, General's Office, and they do not see any issues with it as proposed. It is based off of the previous iteration that already went through, um, some of the review process. And we, um, I pulled some additional components from other towns that have had them approved with similar kind of multi-district areas. Um, so that's kind of where I worked from it, worked it from. Um, but as for the same review turnaround that we had had previously, um, we did not have the capacity to be able to do that. You need, um, well over ninety days to be able to do that. And we just didn't have that, um, opportunity this time.
Okay.
Any other questions or concerns, Kevin?
Not at this time.
Um, before moving to public comment, I did have one question specifically related to the affordability. Um, so I know that there is a requirement in this revised bylaw that any development with eight or more units would be required to have, uh, a ten percent threshold consistent with the, the maximum allowed in the statute. The question I had was related to that eight, eight-unit threshold, that if eight units, if one of them's affordable, that's over the ten percent. Is that something that has been validated with the state that they're, they will accept that threshold?
Um, yeah, they don't have any requirements under, uh, for where, so there's a certain amount you can do by right, and then there's a certain amount that you have to have an EFA for, an economic feasibility analysis, um, to do a deeper affordability, which is below eighty percent. Or if you're trying to do over ten percent, those are the components that require additional review and the E, economic feasibility analysis for the state, um, prior to including them. Um, the, mi- there is no minimum or a maximum number of units, um, to hit that ten percent number per the state. Um, and we did not have any, uh, flags that were, were brought up when the Attorney General's Office did review this iteration. Um, so at this point, we, um, and I have also confirmed with the consultant that it is acceptable. It's a number, there's actually lower numbers that are done in other towns. Um, but we felt that, that eight units was enough that it would likely pencil for developers, um, as that was kind of the sta- the standard that other towns have been using.
Understood. Okay, thank you. Uh, so in that case, I will, uh, will open up to public comments. I see the first, uh, hand that has been raised is Julie Scott. Uh, please, as a reminder for members of the public, please turn on your camera if you have the ability to do so. State your name and your address before starting to provide your comments.
Hello, Julie Scott, Central Street, Wakefield. A couple of questions. Um, I do love the hometown newspaper. I'm a little sad that you're using the item as a reference point. I hope we don't lose the item. Wanted to give them a plug. I see Mark Sodella online. So a couple of weeks ago, I heard, I believe, four point two million dollars in grants over two to three years. And tonight I'm hearing three point seven million dollars over five years, which is about seven hundred, it's about seven hundred fifty thousand dollars-ish a year. Our state leadership needs to bring us back a lot more bacon. That's shockingly low amount of money. Um, by right, we also have, uh, with this law, we also have the accessory dwelling unit law. Is my math correct? The state says that we're two hundred thousand units in need. And we have, the whole state by right can add an accessory dwelling unit. Within the MBTA Communities' law, there are one hundred seventy-seven communities involved. So if I took two hundred thousand and I divided it by the one hundred seventy-seven communities that are lying within this MBTA Communities' law, I get about one thousand one hundred thirty. So I'm not understanding why the state has sat on this for so long. I did a report on this in third grade, or either third grade and again, I think in fifth grade. Uh, my dad was very tight with the governor at that time, and that's when this work started. And I had to interview him a number of times for my elementary school class. This started a long time ago, and wouldn't this work with just the accessory dwelling unit law? And I'm, if I'm talking just about the one hundred seventy-seven communities within this, um, MBTA law, the accessory dwelling unit law covers every community in Massachusetts. So I, I'm, I'm confused as to, and this is maybe a question that's not appropriate for this audience, but it certainly is a question that's appropriate. Why are we getting hit twice? And couldn't the answer be the accessory dwelling unit law, which has not been discussed tonight and is certainly going to impact our community? Um, I, I don't know if that's an appropriate question or not, if anybody wants to address that, and I have other questions as well.
Yeah, Ms. Scott, I can, um, through the chair, I can at least answer part of that. The ADUs, um, are not being addressed because they're not part of the MBTA Communities, and that's what, what this meeting is, is, uh, had been advertised to discuss. Um, that will be discussed at other meetings, and if you have any questions, concerns, or comments, feel free to reach out to me via email. Uh, I know you have my email. Um, the other component, um, to why ADUs will, will or will not solve this problem, um, is right in the spirit and intent of MBTA Communities, the, uh, the law itself. The goal is to create year-round housing that is open to all ages, including families. Um, ADUs by nature being nine hundred and fifty square feet or less, uh, or nine hundred square feet or less, um, are not going to be a situation where you can move a family into it. Um, possibly a family with a baby, but generally speaking, it's not housing for a family. Um, so that is one of the reasons why, I, I mean, I can get into it, but I don't want to get too into it, um, the weeds on, on ADUs tonight. Um, but that is one of the reasons why ADUs would not address the same concern. Um, and as for the affordability or the housing crisis, um, a- and the affordability, there are a lot of different components to it. Um, that are not, i- it's not as black and white, maybe, as discussed. Um, there are some communities who have done more and had a lot more efforts already towards making progress with this, um, housing or affordable housing shortage, um, whatever term somebody wants to use. Um, and the, the town has already made a lot of progress. We've had over, um, one thousand units that have been built since our inclusionary zoning in twenty fifteen, uh, was enacted. And so the goal of the Town Council Subcommittee was to incorporate those existing developments um, and capture that effort that's been made thus far, um, that the town has worked very hard on, both the, the, and the townspeople are, are living with every single day, to reflect some of that as part of the effort to try to be in keeping, um, with the spirit and intent of MBTA Communities.
I, I think you understood the intent of my question. I appreciate your answer very much. Um, I do know, having been on the Master Plan Advisory Committee, that, um, there was a eight point nu- eight point three percent population increase in Wakefield from two thousand ten. We went, um, to now, we went from twenty-four, nine thirty-two to twenty-seven, ninety in two thousand twenty. So we had a tremendous amount of growth, and having been on that committee, I do know that's a far superior growth to many of our contemporaries here in Middlesex County. I didn't see on the chart Crescent Street, the development that's going to be happening on Crescent Street. And I, I don't remember if I saw Mike's gym, and I certainly didn't see anything on Nahon Street or the Friendly Forty Bs. And I know you guys had said it's stuff in the works, but in fairness to the community, we know the Friendly Forty Bs coming. We know Crescent Street's already been approved, and Mike's gym has been approved. Nahon Streets, you know, if, if you don't put that stuff in for Saturday, I, I think there's going to be a huge contingent group from Nahon Street that's going to call you out on that. So just wanted to maybe give you that suggestion, to put that in there. Um, why was this not brought in front of the Traffic Advisory Committee? Because I certainly hope ADL stuff will be going in front, because these two things will be merging at the same time. Previously, this was brought before the, um, Traffic Advisory, and this, this present plan was not.
Um, it was passed along for comment. Um, Conservation Commission was the only entity who asked for a, um, uh, for me to present. Um, so I did, I went to their meeting, I presented, um, the proposal, and then also sent them the map that had the hatched area, so that they could make a, a review and give back any comments. But I have not received comment from the other departments despite following up multiple times.
Okay. Okay. Is this correct? Does the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities, I looked through some of their documents today. Am I correct in my understanding that the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities may rescind a determination of district compliance or require changes to the district to remain in compliance as per Section ten of their guidelines? So this, this could be a moving target. We think we're, yeah, we're going to vote for this and we're going to comply. And then all of a sudden, five years from now, the state could roll out changes and force us to comply. Is that true?
I don't have a, a crystal globe. I, I really can't predict the future. I'm not sure exactly what would end up happening.
But did you receive that information? Because I just printed out a booklet where a lot of communities received letters from the state, and that's one of the paragraphs in the letters that they receive. I can send you the packet. I just, I just, tonight Googled Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities, and I Googled part of this statement, and the paragraph came right up. So
Feel free to send it to me, because they did not send me that, that letter.
I don't think you got your letter yet, because Wakefield wasn't listed in it. But that paragraph is specifically in, I'll, I'll send it to you tonight, because like you said, I have your email.
Thank you.
No problem. Is the state, do you know, sending anybody door-to-door this weekend? Because I've read online in a number of communities that are having town meetings the, a few days before they send people to canvass the community.
I know that there are different housing or nonprofits that have reached out, or I've had citizens that have asked to be connected to get support or to figure out how they could help to bring their neighbors and inform their neighbors. And so I've connected them with the various entities like CHOPA, who has offered to, they have their own variation of an information packet, kind of detailing the previous iteration and where we are now. But I have not had anybody from the state at least reach out to me. Again, like I've said, I've only had the nonprofits reach out to me and residents specifically.
Okay, because if they did, they would have to, if they're going to door-to-door knocking, they, they need to check with the, the police department. Sort of related to this, I know everybody in this panel has worked on this article, either the last time for April or this time. Will there be consideration, if any, that people who are vote counters, who have been connected to this warrant article at any time during its building, taking now about a year and a half, as far as being counters at town meeting? Because I, I really want to see counters, all of us. Nobody likes to raise their hand in public, especially when you sit in front of the TV camera, and everybody can see how you vote. But in fairness to everyone in the community, even counters, we should be seeing their hands being held up. It's one of the reasons why so many people do not participate in town meeting. And, and I go, I always have gone. But I, it's, I don't, I've never considered it fair that I don't see everybody raising their hand. And can we please make strong consideration to having visitors sit in an assigned area, and they can't get up and walk around? And they certainly should not be making it up to the podium to speak. But I, I cannot state how much I appreciate the work that all of you have put into this, successful or not, over the past year and a half, time away from your family, time away from your jobs, loss of vacation time. I really, really do appreciate it. And I, I thank you again for tonight. Thanks.
Thank you. I see the next, the next person who's raised their hand is Mr. McCauley.
Yes, Scott McCauley, thirty-two Wallen Road. I have to concur with Julie. I appreciate and value everybody's time and commitment that you put into this, in, in both versions, actually. Because as I go back, and I know I've been contentious in fighting some of this stuff, and as I go back and I research some of this, it's a lot of time that takes to go through all of these meetings. And it's a lot of time when you're sitting going through this and when you're living through it and volunteering on this board. So thank you. So, but that being said, I, I have some points to make. I have some points of contention. You know, as far as, you know, everybody's touting the survey that was done. And, and I actually got the survey from Sam, and thank you, but it was total eight hundred and fifty-four respondents. Only six hundred and twenty-four people bothered to say yes or no, whether they supported. Only three hundred and fifty-five people said yes, two hundred and sixty-nine said no. Three hundred and fifty-five is forty-one percent, two sixty-nine is thirty-two percent. There was only eighty-six votes between the two. So it wasn't like there was a resounding yes, we want to do this in town. And what's left out is the eighty-five people that bothered to make comments at the end, and ninety-five plus of them were very unfavorable. So I just wanted to point that and throw that out there. The Town Council voted to refer this to you back on October seventh. This warrant article was written, it was timestamped October third, which was in before the warrant closed. So if you're going by every single detail of the warrant article, included in that is the addresses that go along with the map. Now, I know, Mr. Chairman Hogan, I know that you had opened earlier a version of the warrant article that you had. The map that was originally submitted with that, I would, I would say that it's extremely poor quality, to which you would not be able to tell which particular properties were included in this article if you were looking at that map alone. So then you would rely on the addresses that were submitted with it. But if you look at the addresses that were included with that, there's only seventy-nine addresses. The warrant article is printed in the paper and is printed into the, in the actual warrant for the Saturday, has a hundred and fourteen addresses. There was a vote taken by Town Council on October twenty-first, because they realized that they left some properties off. They voted to allow Mr. Mayo to make changes to that. And he did so after the fact, and they revised the actual draft of the warrant itself. But nowhere can I find where this actual article was re-referred to your board with the new language. So what you have before you, if you look at the last page, it has a list of addresses, and it's listed to, it says F seven, seven, one, one, eight, zero, three, zero, zero, blah, blah. It says one fifty-one North Ave, comma, North Ave, comma, Wakefield. So if that's what you have and what you're referring to this evening, there's only seventy-nine addresses. There was almost two to three acres worth of property that were left off of what's included with that map. Now, I brought this up because what was published in the paper for this hearing had a map, which, you know, obviously in the paper, you definitely can't tell what properties are included in that. So it says, and, and I was disappointed not to see the addresses printed. And I know the Town Council did that when they printed theirs, but it said, "Refer to map and addresses on file at Town Clerk's Office," which I went to the Town Clerk's Office. They did not have a file specifically for the planning board for this evening that had this warrant article in it. Now, I brought this up at another meeting, brought it to Mr. Mullin. He seemed, didn't seem to think it was a big idea, big deal. But to me, when my understanding is, once the warrant closed, this should have been printed as presented. The Town Council, because they're running the show, made changes to it without reopening the warrant, and then closing again, and then re-referring it to you. If it was anybody else with any of the other warrants on this, it would have had to been printed as presented. So I, I think that the process that was done on this wasn't really technically correct. Mr. Mullin seemed to disagree. I disagree with him. But I just wanted to bring that up this evening, that you may be voting to approve or disapprove of something without having all of the information. I wanted to make sure that you were aware, because I know that people come before your board, especially if it's zoning for maybe rezoning lots or splitting lots. If somebody came before you, and somehow the maps had changed, or the plot numbers had changed without you really knowing about it, I think that you'd probably look at that and say, what's going on? Because I know that you're sticklers for things like boundary markers and things like that. I just wanted to point this out, that I don't think that this was done correctly because of the overlap and all this that took place to try and get this done for Saturday. So I seem to not think it's correct. I could be wrong, but I'm just throwing that out there as a point of information. The other thing I wanted to point out is that I don't think that you can have historical properties included in this. Would, would that be correct, if I might ask Samantha Elliott?
I haven't seen anything related to historic properties.
Okay. My understanding is part of, so you couldn't put historical registered properties as part of the MBTA overlay? And if, if that's the case, I just wanted to point out that Two Oak Street is Greenwood Union Church, and it's on the National Register of Historic Places. So I don't think anybody's really going to maybe tear that down to build this out that's listed that way?
Just for a piece of clarification, National Register listing doesn't mean anything unless you have a demolition delay review. It only allows for a six-month delay of the review of the demolition process, at which point it gives somebody an opportunity to find another use or option for the property. But it doesn't actually give you any, any protection, generally speaking. Nor does it give you any access to funds unless you are an income-producing property, at which point you can access some federal tax money in the form of credits, tax credits.
Okay, but being a, a fourth generation, my kid's fifth generation, Wakefield, different places around town that have really significant historical value like that, like the Greenwood Union Church, is something that I'd really hate to see be torn down by right and turned into an apartment complex. So, you know, when it's on the National Register of Historic Places, I'd like to see it kept that way. And being a building, a building that was built in eighteen eighty-four, it, it survived a lot of committees and a lot of different planning boards and a lot of different things. And I, I hate to see that happen. And it was included in Greenwood, but things like the St. Joseph's Church, which is right in the middle and tucked in between a few different zones right there, was kind of carved out. So I just want to make sure that we're not, you know, picking and choosing. Because I know, basically, it's like throwing a dart at the thing who was included in all this. And I, I, I just, I just wanted to bring up some of these things. To Ms. Scott's point with the ADU units, they can be short-term rentals with the ADAs, ADUs by right. Now, at some point in Wakefield, I seem to recall, we voted on things against having Airbnbs at a town meeting. I haven't been able to find that, but I believe that we did vote against that. And I haven't been able to find the backup to that. And a few other people I talked to seem to recall it as well, but anybody knows, that'd be great. But I just wanted to point out about the addresses, I think that was a big snafu. I think that was a, a, a cover-the-behind kind of move that happened, because they realized a lot of properties got left off. And if the map is supposed to match up with the properties, the map that you have, that you got as part of your package, first of all, you can't read it, because it's so small. But if you were able to read it, that map does not match up with that list of properties, and it should have, so.
Just to, through the chair, to answer Mr. McCauley's two points. One, if you're concerned about historic structures, make a citizen effort to get a local protection process beyond demolition delay by review with local landmarks, so that there's some sort of jurisdiction over those properties. Because, yeah, the, the demolition delay review is the only access that we have right now, at, at least that I'm aware of. And number two, as for ADUs, under the ADU regulation under Affordable Homes Act, we are permitted to prohibit the utilization of ADUs for short-term rental. And in preliminary, preliminary discussions, there has been a lot of traction to utilize the same sort of language that is being included in the MBTA Communities Overlay District, which is what we are talking about tonight, to prohibit short-term rental use of those areas. Short, yeah, short-term rental use of those structures.
Right. I just envisioned, I mean, there might be a number of people that in the past have tried to do in-laws and for whatever reason, couldn't, because of restrictions, that they might be able to do ADUs now. And to, I heard a few comments about, and to Mr. Lowry's point about curb cuts. I don't know, when my neighbor had a curb cut to, to open the driveway, we had to send postcards out to, you know, blocks worth of people. But I don't really see that as by right. But on Albion Street, I mean, somebody could tear down a commercial building that they've had trouble renting for however many years. They decide they want to turn it into residential, when now you've lost that tax base, because it's going to residential, and they put in a driveway. And now you have a curb cut that you need to contend with, where you're losing potentially two parking spaces on Albion Street, which is already hard-pressed parking. Frankly, if it was me on Albion Street, I, I'd leave the first for a commercial and turn it into a, a pay-for-use parking garage and put residential above, and then use some of those spaces for the residential to max out my capacity, and then rent out parking spaces to other businesses in the area. It says business. It doesn't say what type of business. It just says it has to be commercial business.
It actually does list what type of business. It talks about an active use on the first floor, and parking isn't listed as an active use, so. But you, if you read the bylaw, it does talk about that a little. So nobody, just as a, as a kind of a caveat, nobody can utilize it and shell it out as a, or kind of carve it out for parking.
You know, and, and I go back to Ms. Scott. She said, there was an email that went around that did say that, you know, they can, they can change the guidelines of the zones. So there is something that came out from the state. I saw it as well. So they've already changed the guidelines three times at least by the number of things. And now they're trying to take away funding for the, the poor Mecko kids, which I think is pretty pathetic, that they've added that into the list. That's really low for the state. But this is what they're doing to try and strong-arm everybody into this. They're wanting people to comply with zoning. They don't have the right to say, you need to do this. The whole reason it's before us is because we need to vote it in ourselves, because they know that with the Home Rule, we have, we have total right of zoning in Wakefield. This is our legislature, and, and the, the seventeen towns that have said no, we already said no three times. Now we're here the fourth time, so I, I just, I, I get where you're coming from. Some of you feel that you need to defend this as Town Council and, and, you know, defending lawsuits against the town. But other towns have just said, hey, you know, sorry, I'm not doing it. I think Milton's going to win. This is an unfunded mandate. I reached out to this board back in September, I believe, asked them to reach out to the state auditor to find out, you know, get clarification if this is an unfunded mandate. All it took was sending a letter. It wouldn't have done any harm or anything. I don't think that ever took place. So I know there's a few other towns that have that, and I think it's part of Milton's lawsuit as well. So hopefully we find out, but if we vote ourselves in before these things come back, we're stuck with it, unless they shoot down the whole thing. So my whole thing is to stay out as long as we can until everything settles. You know, if we have to come back in April, tell the Attorney General that we have stuff in process to go the next week. Or I, we can go for round five. I, I'm just, I, I just think this is a bad law overall. It's going to be bad for Wakefield. It's going to cost us way more than what we're ever going to see in grants. Grants are going to dry up, because the state's in the tank. The state's going to lose federal funding, because our governor refuses to comply with the, with, with federal rules. But they're asking us to comply with state rules. So it's a do-as-I-say, not-as-I-do kind of thing. And I just think, you know, we need to say no at some point, so. I, I thank you, because I know I've taken more than my time, so I appreciate it.
Before we pivot to the next, next person, I'd like to, to point to Mr. Mayo to address some of those process-related comments and concerns.
But my, my hand was up, because that's why Tom Mullin is here tonight, to, to address those for you, so.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I was, I was going to volunteer to try to respond to a couple of Mr. McCauley's points. One was, it's, it's important to understand that there's no need to identify by property address the properties that will be within the district. And we have done that in the interest of, you know, maximum transparency. But legally, it's not required. And so if it was done incorrectly at some point, one, so what? Because it wasn't necessary, and two, so what? Because it's been fixed. Also, it's not part of the bylaw. And what is referred by a Board of Selectmen, or in our case, the Town Council, to the planning board, is the bylaw. And, and that includes the zoning map. But the zoning map, again, need not include a list of properties. And I think, I think it, it misconceives the role of both the Town Council and the Planning Board to think that every document has to be identical as it works its way through this system. The Attorney General is emphatic that a planning board has this hearing, has its zoning amendment hearing, because there's an opportunity to change things. If, if your board decides that there are some changes that ought to be made on Saturday morning, you can, you can include a recommendation for those changes in your report to town meeting. With or without that recommendation, town meeting may choose to make changes within the four corners of the article to what is before it. So I, I, I think it's important to understand that what counts, the date that really counts is the date that the warrant is posted. And the warrant has to be posted at least two weeks in advance of the town meeting. And if at that point, the warrant refers to a particular plan, which is on file with the town clerk, that is all that counts. And that is what happened here. By the time that the warrant was posted, it referred to a dated plan, and a copy of that dated plan was in the town clerk's file. I've seen it. And then finally, with respect to the National Registry of Historic Places, I have not seen anything to suggest that the state law requires that such properties be excluded from the district. And nor am I aware of any legal reason why it should be. Samantha is entirely correct that, and I can tell you as the owner of one of those properties, it means virtually nothing. All it means is that if you happen to be in the town, it means virtually nothing. All it means is that if you happen to be in the town, such as ours, where there is a historic demolition delay, that it can delay six months, maybe a year, the, how long it would take to tear down the building if you chose to. Anyway, I'll try to answer any other questions, but I wanted to address those.
Thank you, Mr. Mullen. So I know I see Julie Scott has raised her hand again. I would like to, before allowing her to speak again, I'd like to see if any other members of the public who have not spoken already are interested in doing so. Okay, seeing none, then Ms. Scott, feel free to unmute yourself. I will note that my intention is to limit this set of comments to five minutes. And then unless anyone else raises their hand right now, close, close the public comment period after Ms. Scott concludes.
Thank you for letting me speak again. I do remember hearing the traffic advisory with the first round, talk about, we never consider visiting nurses to areas in Wakefield. And that's a huge issue that they get calls about. Food deliveries and especially during the holidays, kids home for the holidays. So that adds to parking concerns. I do have a wondering. It's strange that the Airbnb issue came up last night. I spent a lot of time last week trying to find in annual town reports over the past ten years exactly when we voted on the Airbnb stuff. Because I was at a Wakefield Center Neighborhood Association meeting recently and somebody had mentioned that there were three Airbnbs that were recently passed. And I'm concerned about that. And I know I talked to Steve about Airbnbs in a different type of a situation last year. So if anybody can find anything about that and forward it my way, because I do know people are talking about the MBTA 3A as well as being another type of way to get Airbnb built and use it without letting the town know. Because there are Airbnbs all over Wakefield now. There's, you just Google them. There's a ton of them. So I do think that some people are assuming that that's a use that they can make out of a yes vote for this. So any help that anybody can provide me in getting that information about when we voted and what we voted on, that'd be perfect. Thank you.
I see Mr. McCauley raise his hands. Before we do that, Mr. Mayo, I want to give you the opportunity to respond.
Sure, I'll look for the Airbnb. I forget the year frankly when it was. It was voted down by town meeting. What we wanted to do was to allow Airbnbs in certain areas by special permit. So there could be a, a way to monitor them and way to, a way to, you know, have them designated. But the town voted it down. I was, I think around the time that the Pope was coming. So that's gonna help me out. I remember some of the comments at town meeting. So that might help.
Around the time of that Lynn Field issue, there was an issue.
Yeah, I think it might have been actually before that.
It was right, it was right before, yeah.
So I'll, I'll have to, if I have time tomorrow, look through the, look through the area, but the town meeting books.
I got modeled between two thousand fourteen and two thousand fifteen because they're so interesting. Those books are so interesting to read. Thank you.
But we wanted to make sure that this did not incentivize people to put in Airbnbs. And when, when someone is right now advertising Airbnb, they get a cease and desist from the building inspector. And sometimes Tom Mullen needs to get involved in it. So we do try to do those when we can, when they're brought to our attention. But this specifically, this bylaw specifically has language in there that does not allow that short-term rental. Just to make sure that didn't, that didn't happen and give a lot more, a lot more teeth that it's exactly prohibited. So that's why that was put in there. Thank you.
Thank you. So in that case, Mr. McCauley, feel free. Again, I'm going, my intention is to limit it to five minutes and then we will close this section for public comment.
Great, thank you. And I appreciate you giving me the opportunity to speak again. I, I would tend to, you know, and I know, Mr. Mullen, you've been an attorney for a long time and I respect your opinion. I respectfully disagree because when you say that, you know, the people within the zones don't need to be notified, if this was a historic district or a farm district, they would be required in a zoning to be sent postcards. So, you know, the fact that the town sent this was, was something that I had been hammering away at and I'm glad that they did do that as part of the zoning. Because I think people that are in these zones deserve to know that their properties might be being rezoned. And then, Mr. Hogan, I know you had up, Chair Hogan, sorry, if you, if you could indulge me, you had up the actual referral that was sent to you back on October eighth. And if, if you could go to the end of that and look at the map that was referred to you, I, I think that anybody would be hard-pressed to even know that Albion Street or maybe part of Crescent Street or even maybe part of Oak Street would be included in this based upon this map. And the map, definitely that was printed in the item. There, there's no way that you could tell. You could barely tell that these were within a half mile of a train station other than the small T. And then you might not have noticed the Audubon Road property because it had no type of indication other than it being a color on this map and the paper was printed in black and white. So you really couldn't tell that that might have been a zone. So what was referred and what was stamped, I believe, had the map included because it says, see map dated October third, although the maps aren't dated October third. So I don't know how that works. But then it also says, see list of addresses. So I would contend that that list of addresses is part of the warrant article. And it was included in the warrant article book and was included in what was printed in the paper. But they don't match up. So what you got as your referral is different than what is now in the warrant article in the paper. So that would be, and I know we're just green, I almost smell, you probably have something to say in that. It's fine. And I'll listen. I'll listen. I'll hear what you say. But I don't think it all chides up because when you have zoning, you can take properties away, but you can't add properties on because people wouldn't have been properly notified. So if I asked you, a sixty-three Albion Street was on that map that you got on the first referral, you would have no idea. You can't tell what properties are on there. I'll let you know that on that map that you got the first time, the entire north side of Albion Street was left off. All the properties that are on their breakout maps that they have, the entire north side of Albion was left off of those addresses that were given to originally. So if that's what people were relying on, they wouldn't know that their properties are included. That's just a small portion of it. So I, I'd just be cognizant and aware that I, I think there was some shortcomings in the whole process. Whether it was legal or not, whatever, but I think there were some flaws that were made. And I think that it's just ingenuous to say that things don't count. If they bothered enough to put it into the published version that goes out to the public with the hundred and fourteen addresses, then it should have been resent to you so that you were aware of all the properties that are in the zone as well. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. So with that, I think the period where we're having public comment, I'm going to close for this. I will allow Counselor McLean to speak. I saw his hand raised because he's the chairman of the subcommittee before we pivot back to the planning board, if Counselor McLean still wishes.
Thank you, Chair Hogan. Just in response generally to Mr. McCauley's statements, I, I just want to say that, you know, allegations are being made that things were done incorrectly procedurally. We have been as transparent as we possibly could throughout this process on the subcommittee. We have taken many of his own comments into account. We have probably done things that Counselor Mullen, Town Council Mullen would say we did not have to. I guess no good deed will go unpunished. Because we did indeed try to publish more in the item. As a relatively conservative guy, I'm not thrilled that we spent thousands of dollars that we're now being criticized for having spent more than perhaps we had to. But that's what we did. And, you know, we've tried to do our best. And okay, we're not perfect. But me thinks he does protest a bit too much. Thank you.
Okay. With that being said, so the warrant article has been referred to by the planning board. Any other members of the planning board wish to have any other comments before I anticipate we will take a vote?
Yeah. I, I do have a question, Jim. And this is to Mr. McCauley. Are you saying the map changed or the text that described the map changed? Because there's, it's one thing if the map changed. Because the thing is, I believe we can all read maps here, so we know what's going on. But you're just referring to informational text that went along with the map, correct?
Correct. The informational text that went along with the map, I, I'm assuming and, and it looks to be correct. I know at some point there were a few different things that were changed with the map. And there's one thing that I pointed out that got removed because it shouldn't have been on there. So I know there's been some, but the map, I believe, is correct, but it's the map that's included in what was referred to you is, if you have that document, the one that Sherry sent you on October eighth, is extremely difficult to read because of the quality of it and the PDF is such a poor quality. I know there's been a few versions lately that have been put out. They're a much higher resolution that you're able to see the properties. But the text that goes along with it that describes all the properties that are listed in it is incorrect. It only has seventy-nine of the hundred and fourteen that are on the map.
Well, again, a map is a map and then there's text that go with it. So you're trying to say because the, the descriptive text that was included for informational purposes did not match. You're saying, it sounds like you're saying that the map is incorrect. I, I don't believe the map's changed at all. There's a map and then there's text that goes with it. And then there was informational information was put out. I, again, I, like others, I think you're just confusing the issue here. I don't have an issue with that. And, and one thing that I'm used to by reading a lot of zoning is it always says on the zoning that the map that is in the building inspector's office on his wall is usually the official one anyways. So whether something's online or anywhere else, there's a map large enough where people can go see it. Again, you're just confusing the issue here. So, thank you.
Any other members of the planning board have any comments or questions before we we proceed?
I will make a motion that we close the public hearing portion of this.
I'll second that.
So motion by Matt, seconded by Kevin to close the public hearing portion of the proceeding. It's a roll call vote, Theo and Noel.
Yes.
Kevin York?
Yes.
Matt Lowry?
Yes.
So public hearing portion is closed. And then any other comments from other members of the planning board or motions related to the map?
I'll make a couple of comments. This is a, a compromise zoning proposal that was put forward to, to comply with the with the MBTA Communities Act. I don't think it's, it's a lost opportunity that I see, but I understand that a lot of folks in town just want to have something that does comply. I am one of the people that strongly believe that giving people more rights with their property is not government imposing on you. They're actually less, there's less imposing because you have more options to do with what your property is. So I, I'm really getting confused. The people that are saying that this is being forced on us. The town, we are putting proposals together, putting them forward and people vote on them. So I do not see that the town is imposing anything on us. I understand how you need to have incentives for dealing with what's going on with the housing crisis right now because I have a child who had to move out of state. I work in an office where we cannot find people because no one can afford housing around here. There is a housing shortage in this state and for some reason, Wakefield does not want to do their part. And I, I find that really kind of distressing. Again, this isn't the best, especially the Audubon Road has been brought up, has been brought up. It is probably the worst place for housing. Everything that gets built up there, you have to use a car. There's minimal walking from there. So this is not an optimal solution that's proposed here, but it's not the worst thing. And I think it will help grow some housing in town. There are some downsides that I hope do not come true, but overall, I'm gonna support this. And I'm gonna make a recommendation. I will favorably recommend this for town meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Lowry. Anyone else on the planning board wish to provide any more comments?
Sure.
Mr. Noel?
I'll jump in. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm also gonna recommend favorable action on, on the compromise bylaw in district. And I'm recommending favorable action because I think it's responsive to the community's needs and it really takes all the feedback that's been given over the last year, last year and a half. I do agree with Matt that we want to be strategic and take advantage of opportunities that are in front of us. But it, this is a strategic compromise. It meets the requirements of 3A. It gives us another zoning tool for Wakefield and it doesn't preclude future zoning consideration or taking advantage and, and being thoughtful in the future for more strategic housing development, affordable housing or mixed use. I'm a, I'm really, I view the character areas as a really thoughtful way of defining these districts and, and taking advantage of the existing building enassing that's there and adding to it. I think it also positions us well for current and future funding, which is a very strategic thing because the more communities that opt out of MBTA, the, the easier it's going to be for us to win grants and bring funding to town and to use that funding strategically to meet future town vision. So again, that's why I'm recommending favorable action. I think it's a useful compromise that, that puts us one step forward. So thank you.
Thank you. Mr. York, would you care to have any comments?
Yeah, I, I just want to thank the subcommittee for the time that was put into this bylaw and this set of maps. I, I know that's no small task. Also thank all the members of the public who joined this meeting. The two who spoke as well as the others who were silent listeners, just to be educated on the topic. There are components of this that I like. I like that there's an attempt for economic development around economic corridors in town. That said, the intent of this and the spirit of this was supposed to be housing capacity. I, I don't think it does a lot on that front. I like the affordability component of it. I think that was a response to feedback from the town. What this doesn't really do anything to address is lowercase a affordability and just overall housing supply in town. I, I don't see a lot of new housing in reality being developed as part of this since so much of this would require demolition to current structures that are already in place. But like Theo and Matt have said, I think this is a compliance by law at this point that, that we're passing, which I do think we have to pass as a town. So to Chair McLean's point, it's not perfect. I, I think this is a compromise and I think they did a good job. The subcommittee did a good job of listening to what the town doesn't want in order to pass something that puts us in compliance. So I'll be voting in favor of favorable action on this.
Thank you, Mr. York. With that being said, I'd like to make a couple of comments as it relates to this. I think as other members of the planning board have noted, this, in my opinion, is not a perfect map. I do agree with Mr. Lowry that this represents a failed oppo- In my opinion, is not a perfect map. I, I do agree with Mr. Lowery that this represents a failed opportunity. And I do see some significant downside risks related to impacting our commercial corridors, specifically along Albion. Um, by having what should be a more commercially oriented street, potentially over time. Being phased into two family or uh, two family or two story rather, uh. Multi-family units, which I don't think represents the highest and best use. Uh, if, if this was a map that was. On submitted to us on, on, just on the merits without the MBTA, I, I, I doubt I'd be in support. With that being said, I will be recommending favorable action. It's a compromised map. Compliance, I don't think is gonna be optional. Uh, people who think that we're gonna be able to resist the state, I think are not being realistic. Think Milton's about to lose that lawsuit, lawsuit and they're gonna incur significant financial repercussions due to it. And I don't think it's responsible stewardship of Wakefield's scarce resources to thumb our nose at, at the state. Over what I think as a map that's not gonna have material impacts in terms of. The overall character. I, I remain deeply skeptical besides the, the potential for some of those. Units on Albion that this is gonna deliver lots of housing. Um, which I understand may or may not have been the, the objective. All that being said, you know, I think a lot of my comments represent fundamental disagreements which are, have been respectful through. The uh, through the, through the years and of terms of approach and compliance and. Thoughts in terms of the town. So I'm sure that most people who are hearing me speak aren't really surprised with the, the nature of those comments. But. Echoing what everyone else said, as someone who went through this process as being the proponent, I also acknowledge and understand how much. Time and effort the subcommittee has put in and I de- de- deeply thank you and. Working to respond to some of what we've heard when this was originally submitted to the town and, and ultimately rejected in the first go around. So, uh, again, not a perfect map. Really thankful that the folks who put this map together did so. And I will definitely be in support. And I would encourage everyone else at town meeting to be in support of passing this map. To make sure that we're in compliance with the three A law by our statutory required, required dates. With that, with that, um, would any other, with any member of the planning board like to make a motion?
Sure, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that the planning board recommend favorable action on uh, Article four A or Article four.
So.
Second then.
So motion by Theo, seconded by Matt, roll call vote, Mr. York?
Yes.
Mr. Lowery?
Yes.
Mr. Noel?
Yes.
And myself, yes. So planning board has voted to recommend favorable action on this warrant article. Uh, referred to us by the town council and we will, we will present that report at the town meeting. Uh, on Saturday, November sixteenth. So with that, uh, we'll close. Item number two on the planning board meeting minutes. There's like, I remember three in the planning board meetings and proceed to item number four, items not anticipated by the chair. I know that we talked, uh, had a couple items before. Uh, I'm not sure if anyone else had any other items not anticipated by the chair they would like to bring about this time. Seeing none, I'll proceed to item five. Uh, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Motion by Theo, uh, seconded by Kevin. So roll call vote, Mr. Lowery?
Um, sure, yeah.
Mr. York?
Yes.
Mr. Noel?
Yes.
And myself, yes. So for nothing, it passes. Uh, meeting adjourned. Thank you all for your time.